The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:01 PM on July 23rd, 2019. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right, are Director Jackie Muscata-Jones, Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton, Director Jessica Craig is traveling and is absent this evening, myself, Director Mike O'Staffi, Director Tanya Simons, Director Heather Douglas, and our new Superintendent Corey McIntyre. Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Simons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Board members in front of you is the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda proposed? All right, is there a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, the agenda is accepted. The next agenda item is opportunity to address the school board. There are no cards tonight, nobody is looking to do that, so we will move on to Superintendent's report, and that is the Superintendent's report from Mr. McGuire. Did I say McGuire? Oh, my God. Director McIntyre.
You know, I have been called lots of things already, so it's all good.
I don't know where that one came from, sorry.
It's all right. Well, you know, a regular part of the Superintendent's report is to share our points of pride in the district, and because it's summertime, we don't have any specific points of pride other than just a couple things. First of all, I just want to remind our public in our communities that we have our Reading is Fun 5K run coming up at the Elm Creek Park Reserve Acorn area in Maple Grove on August 10th at 8:00 AM, that's the check-in time, and the Family Mascot runs at 9:00, and then the rest of the runs start at 9:30. So we're hoping that everyone will join us, and I'll have my family there with, and encouraging them to make it the whole distance, so we'll see if that happens.
Very good.
Secondly, I just wanted to touch base and share a little bit about my transition plan, and first of all, I have to, I've said it many times already, but I need to say one more time that it's a real honor and a privilege to be here, and I've been very anxious to get started and very excited that that time's finally come. So it's been really, a really good time to get out and start connecting with our community and our buildings, and as our, as the Superintendent charged me with being responsible for implementing our school board's mission, and doing that by organizing the people and resources in order to fulfill that mission, really focusing in the end on student learning. And what I've already begun to learn as I visit our buildings, I've had 17 sites visited since the 1st of July, and I got another roughly, you know, 12 or 13 to go here by the end of the month, and I've just really been impressed with the level of commitment and desire to do what's best for students. And that passion that's already here is just a great place to be starting from as a new Superintendent coming in. So from now through, kind of in that November timeframe, I'm taking the time that it needs to really listen and learn, and find out more about what our system's all about, taking the time to invest in hearing from our stakeholders, and that includes students, teachers, staff, our families, our business partners, our administrators, and our elected officials, and really just to build effective relationships to start out here, and give them a chance to tell me about what we do well and where we can continue to improve. So that time connecting with others will hopefully continue to build trust and understanding, and give me a broad view of the district, and help me shape our efforts around strategic direction. So later in the fall, I'll come back to you with what I've learned, and begin to help us, you know, pinpoint the efforts that we have in the district. So just to wrap up, I wanted to thank everyone for being so welcoming, and taking the time to help me learn and understand about the people and the programs and our facilities, and most importantly, the students in our amazing district, so looking forward to the weeks to come.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent McIntyre. Our next agenda item on the school board is the school board reports. And first, Director Muscata-Jones, do you have a committee report for us this evening?
Haven't had any committees in the last month.
Okay. Director Dawson-Walton, do you have any reports? Director Simons, do you have a report or update?
Nope.
Director Douglas?
I do. I attended the District 287 Board Meeting, the last one was last week in June, just after, well, maybe, I don't know, whatever, it was after the last time we met here. So anyways, we accepted our budgets for the next school year, and it was a pretty smooth, quiet meeting, similar to this one. And we do not have any meetings during the month of July, so I'll be resuming with them in August.
Okay, thank you. And I do not have a report this evening, so that finalizes Agenda Item Number Six. Agenda Item Number Seven is the Presentation Regarding E-Learning and Flex Learning, and Executive Director of Technology Anthony Paternos will lead the presentation. Anthony?
Good evening, Chair O'Staffi, School Board, and Superintendent McIntyre. I'm excited to be here this evening with one of our team members who helped us build the Flex Learning Day Plan to provide you with an overview and kind of a, an understanding of what the background is behind e-learning, what does that mean, and what does that mean for our district as we put a proposed e-learning day plan together. So as we get started, our outcomes for this evening with you guys is to review the e-learning day requirements and statute, review Oseo's proposed Flex Learning Plan, so we've got some intentionality on why we're calling this a Flex Learning Plan as opposed to the statute naming convention of e-learning, and solicit the opportunity for feedback on where we're at with the plan. As I've outlined, and we've provided in some of the board updates, we're looking in August, at the August Board Meeting, to bring a final plan to you guys for approval, which is part of the statutory requirements. Once we have approval, then we will be providing communication out to our families and community about this e-learning plan and what it means for our district, and give us an opportunity to implement or execute an e-learning day during the next school year as it comes up. I'd like to invite Andy Bedeau up to introduce her as we get started. She is one of the team members that helped us put this plan together. She is our Coordinator of Digital Learning for Oseo Area Schools, and I'll kind of get things set up, and then I will hand it off to her to kind of get into some of the details of the plan. So we started a planning process, I would say, late February, early March, after we had all our wonderful weather cancellations and are looking for a variety of options on how we potentially address these in the future, and getting ready, as you know, the winter season will come before we know it, and the students will be singing "Let It Snow," of what can we do to prepare our district for a variety of options to address those school closures. And so as we looked at what our current reality is, Oseo Area Schools has 172 student contact days and a short secondary school day in comparison to our metro area districts. So our student contact time at the secondary level and at the elementary level is six instructional hours per day, where in many of our metro college districts, we're looking at six and a half to seven hours per day. And there's two statutory pieces when it comes to contact time. One, students need to be in school session for at least 165 student contact days, and there's an hour requirement as well, and that changes based on the different grade levels. At the kindergarten level, it's 850 hours throughout the school year. At the grades one through five, that would be 935. At grades seven through eight, 935 as well, and then at grades nine through 12, you need a 1,020-hour minimum in a school year. If we look at Oseo's hours and contact days, we have 172 contact days, with the hours being at the kindergarten lever, level, 1,032 compared to the required 850, so again, significantly more than what we need. At the grades one through five, we have a 900 and, oh, excuse me, 1,032 contact hours, where they only need 935. When we get into our secondary buildings, that's where we run into issues, where we have only 1,032 hours built in, and we need a minimum of 1,020. So as soon as we cancel two school days, we've hit that threshold of if we cancel anymore, we're out of statutory compliance. So these limited days and restricted hours do not provide much flexibility when we start looking at weather-related cancellations, in particular, when we start getting into three, four, five, and so forth days in the school year. Grades K through five greatly exceed the number of required hours for instruction outlined by state statute, and some of our other things that we know that we have within our current reality is Schoology, is an LMS that we use in grades, well, elementary through high school, but primarily in middle school and high schools where those are used significantly, and grades four through 12 are in a one-to-one environment. So as we brought the team together and looking at what our challenges were, we set out to look at specifically a plan that will allow our students at the secondary level, six through 12, to engage in continuous, relevant, and rigorous learning in the event of school closure due to inclement weather, which is kind of the background of where we are going and what we're proposing. This is the kind of the decision-making framework. I want us to all think that this is a continuous improvement model. So last year was the first year some school districts implemented e-learning for the first time. So there's still a lot of learning that school districts are doing in the state of Minnesota of what is best practice, what is working well, what isn't working, and as we look at implementing this plan this school year, we know that we're going to have to do some input and feedback of when we actually implement this to understand what's working, what isn't working, so engaging our families, engaging our students and our teachers of how this actually transpires when we actually enact it. If you look, we had a large core planning team made up of district curriculum leaders, technical folk, teachers, representation from Education Minnesota Oseo as well, and we worked collectively to look at what the statute says, look at some of the practices and things we had going on in our organization, to not try and create something radically different than what we've had, because we've had some similar experiences with ACT learning days, e-learning days at the high school level, and then ultimately came to a proposal that we're bringing forward to you guys tonight to gather some feedback on, as well as we brought it to Cabinet as well, and shared the outline of that. Then we'll be looking at implementation and refinement, so again, thinking about continuous improvement, so we've got a plan trying to anticipate as many things as we can, but we know that there will be things that will come up, and as we implement this, having that continuous feedback loop to improve this as we continue to move forward. Project timeline, I'm not going to dig in deeply to that, but you can see March through August, the different steps that we've been taking place to gather feedback and put this plan in place, again, bringing this to you guys tonight to gather that feedback on where we're at. And if we look at where this is grounded, it's coming from really the state statute that was passed two years ago, which is why some school districts last year had a plan in place. So districts may use up to five e-learning days for inclement weather. Sometimes this has been confused by some districts that have had e-learning days or Flex Learning Days built into their calendar already. Those days do not count for student contact time. So districts have put these in place to kind of experiment and try some things, but with the understanding that we're running these days, even though they're built into the calendar, we cannot count them for student contact time. So the way the statute works is it has to be used in replacement on the day that you cancel for inclement weather. The way the statute reads is a local plan must be in place with consultation from the teachers' union and approval by the school board. We've been working very closely with EMO, we've got the final draft language in place for an MOU to actually enact this and move this forward next school year, so we've had a very good partnership in developing this with them. The other component is we have to have annual notification prior to the start of the school year that we have a plan and what the plan is. So one of the challenges we ran into last year, and I asked the state, well, if we put a plan in, you know, mid-year, could we do this? And the reply back was no, you had to provide notification prior to the start of the school year and actually to actually enact the plan. So that's why we're in this process right now, to make sure we have notification in place before we start the school year. Other requirements, we must include accommodations for families with limited access to technology, must provide accessible options for students with disabilities, and teachers must be accessible by phone and online during normal school hours. Students must attend and engage with all their normal subject areas. Learning activities should be a continuation of current learning, not a work makeup day, or here's a bunch of worksheets and packets just to do, and attendance needs to be taken for that day. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Andy to kind of go through what are the meat and potatoes of the plan that we've fleshed out for Oseo Area Schools.
Thank you, Anthony. Chair O'Staffi, School Board Superintendent McIntyre. My name again is Andy Bedeau, and I'm the Coordinator for Digital Learning, and I will be sharing the plan, the recommended plan with you, and as I do that, I'm going to highlight the areas that will meet the state requirements. So to begin, the key points of the plan are, one, the plan for this year is for K, or, excuse me, the plan for this year is for six, 12 only for this current school year. This is primarily because, as Anthony mentioned, secondary students are most likely to be short instructional minutes due to weather-related cancellations and have access to a one-to-one mobile device. Second, this plan allows for flexibility, as it could be used for other school cancellations or closings that are not weather-related. For example, Anthony mentioned ACT testing day for juniors that happens in the spring. And third, this plan will not be put into action until after two school cancellations. The exception would be for this upcoming school year, in which a Flex Learning Day would be called on the first weather-related cancellation. This day would be used as a practice run or a trial run, run-through for our students, our teachers, and our families in the district. One state requirement that Anthony mentioned for e-learning days is that the content of the lesson must be a continuation of learning and not just a makeup day. So in order to meet this, lessons would be posted in Schoology by 9:00 AM. This would allow for teachers some time to gather and enter activities and resources into Schoology, and students and families would have a two-hour window, at least a two-hour window of notification that a Flex Learning Day would be called. The lesson also must be connected to core standards and include some kind of student engagement. This could be an activity or task like a quiz, an online discussion, or an assignment that would be collected. And then the lesson should not take more time to complete than a standard class period. Another state requirement is that teachers must be accessible by phone and online. So in our plan, teachers would need to define a minimum of two hours, two office hours between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. The purpose of these office hours are for the teacher to be available to answer parent and student questions related to that day's lesson, and teachers would be able to use Google Meet or Google Voice, which are tools that we have already accessible in our G Suite. And then teachers and students would also be able to communicate online through email and Schoology on a Flex Learning Day. In addition, attendance must be taken on the Flex Learning Day. So attendance would be tracked through Schoology, and then teachers would submit their attendance in synergy. Students who cannot attend digitally would follow the regular attendance process by calling the attendance line or sending a note to the attendance office. Teachers would have four days then to submit their attendance. And then finally, as Anthony mentioned, on a Flex Learning Day, student accommodations would be worked out between a student and a teacher on an individual basis. So for example, a student with limited access to technology would need to connect with their teacher on the Flex Learning Day, so for example, through phone, but would have time afterwards to complete that day's lesson. So that's the plan, the highlights that we're bringing forward. I'll hand it over to Anthony to see if anybody has any questions.
Andy and I will do our best to tag team any questions that you come in or feedback for us to consider as we look to bring the final proposal to you at the August Board Meeting for final approval.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
My first question is, and you guys may have this figured out, and this is maybe not as comprehensive in this format than what I'm looking for, but what I was wondering is, it says teachers must be accessible by phone and online during normal school hours. So if we have a situation where, let's say, I'm the teacher and I have decided to take vacation this week, and I'm going to be gone, and I'm supposed to have a sub, does my sub have to do it, or do I?
That's one of the things we're still kind of in coordination with, with Education Minnesota, and what that looks like.
Sure.
If a teacher has pre-arranged being out and they can perform the duties during that time, what does that look like and what does that mean? If not, likewise, we know we might encounter a situation like I was aware of last year, when we had the weather events come in, and because of the cold weather or snowstorm, it knocked power lines down or cut Comcast off, where, you know, individual staff members or students can't access the internet because of that. And so for some of those unique situations, we're going to have to take them case by case as they come and navigate our way around those. There's not necessarily a clear-cut answer for what that's going to look like, but we are thinking about that and planning and anticipating for what that could be, whether we message those specific classes that this, your class for this e-learning day will not be held, and makeup opportunities will occur after school returns. I think there's a variety of opportunities we can explore for those case-by-case scenarios that may occur.
That was my next question. So then my third question is, what about children who don't have regular access to technology, and they have, you know, six classes on a given day? How are they checking in with all of these different teachers? You know, what if all of those teachers have the same exact office hours? How are they going to be getting their assignments?
Yep. So again, access to technology in particular, this is why we've limited the plan to six through 12, because they all have one-to-one technology.
Yep.
So we know that the resource has been provided. When we start looking at the potential on the internet access and connectivity on that aspect, the last time we ran a check into that was prior to me, but must have been in the 2016-17 school year, we had a 96% in-home connectivity rate within our district. Now, I don't know necessarily what it is, you know, a couple years later, I will have to do another study to understand that again, to see if it's increased. But again, the, what we would be looking for is, again, individual teachers working with that student. So while all the office hours may be at the same time, it can be a quick phone call to each one of those teachers, just, you know, notifying, hey, is there anything I can do while I'm at home that would qualify? Or can we work on this when, you know, school resumes and we can partner on the activity and figure out how to best meet those needs? It's not a whole lot different than how we're addressing digital learning right now. So a student may attend school all day, and a teacher may assign a digital learning task, and teachers work with our students on a daily basis to create accommodations and work through some of those challenges that we know exist within our community.
Okay. My last question is about the Google Voice and Google Meet. If students are checking in with their teachers that way, how are they getting that contact information?
So we're going to work with teachers to set up Google Voice accounts, which what publicly gets posted is it looks like a regular phone number. So we'll work with teachers to get those identified and presented to students via syllabus or within their Schoology, so students know what that contact number is, and then, you know, they can call from any phone to that voice number. The benefit on the teacher's side is they don't have to provide a personal home phone number or a cellphone number. It also allows the opportunity for a teacher to use their Chromebook, their district-issued device, to receive those calls, so they don't have to use any of their personal technology for work-related functions.
Thank you.
Director Simons, any questions?
Yeah, as you were doing your research and putting the plan together, did you benchmark with any other districts, and were there some key insights that you built into the plan?
Yeah, so connected with Robbinsdale, Northfield, and Farmington. Farmington has had a plan kind of in place for a long time, they've been building these Flex Learning Days into their schedule. Their community looks a little more unique, as they have a one-to-one program, K through 12, in their district, and they've had a longstanding K through 12, one-to-one program. So we looked at what all those districts were doing and the plans that they have. We actually brought in plans from a few other districts that we knew had them. I'm trying to think, Spring Lake Park, Shakopee, and there might have been one other I can't think of off the top of my head. So we kind of went through their plans. I did have a conference call with Robbinsdale Public Schools and kind of what was their experience with that. Also attended an AMSD with one of our board members, listening to several school districts that had e-learning plans and sharing their experiences, so we took in their insights and similarly modeled kind of some of the things that they were doing in their districts within this plan.
Great. And one more question, through that research, did you get a gauge on student participation in the e-learning days? Did you find that there was high participation, or do other districts experience, kind of like the students just want the day off and then they call in, or do you have the note?
Yeah, we didn't get any direct data on the student participation. What I would say indirectly in my conversations with Robbinsdale, it was, it was a very positive experience, they had high levels of engagement, they definitely, they sent out parent and community surveys afterwards, they had some good lessons learned that they're working on navigating through, in particular, looking at some of the, how do we address some of the accommodation needs within the district, which we're processing through as well, but it seemed like a good first go for districts that implemented it. Northfield in particular, they had a good participation rate, and they actually experienced over 10 weather-related cancellations back in September, they had a tornado that went through, that they had weather cancellations for that, and then they had all the winter weather that came through as well. So they were only anticipating to do some dry runs in Northfield, and ended up enacting all five e-learning days to try and gain what they needed back. So overall, the districts that have done it have had a positive first experience, again, also saying there's things to learn and things to improve, improve on. One of the other data points that we look back at is our ACT learning days. So we've been doing an ACT e-learning day for the last several years in our district, and kind of looked at, at participation and engagement. And as Andy said, part of our language in this plan has been intentionally to go Flex Learning Day to broaden the plan that it can count for e-learning, or when we do an ACT, or if statute ever changes, we've got some flexibility in the framework that we're laying down. The way we used to run ACT days is we attached participation and attendance to the completion of an actual assignment, not whether a student engaged in the, in the content or not, it had to be, I had to actually complete something in order to get the attendance. So looking at trying to engage the engagement on that day compared to what the data shows, because it was only based on whether they actually turned something in, was kind of misleading, which is partially why we've kind of changed the protocols for how we're going to do a Flex Learning Day and ACT Day moving forward, where attendance will be taken based on a student going into the Schoology course and engaging in the content, not necessarily completing something. There's still going to be an expectation that they complete a task or an activity, but we're going to, you know, we talked about normal attendance practice within school. If a student shows up on the day, depending, they could show up and engage at different levels, but they're still in attendance and marked as present if they show up to class. So we're trying to create that similar experience with, with an e-learning or a Flex Learning Day, that as long as they show up and engage somehow in the content, we're going to, you know, mark that for that participation, and then look at the completion of the activity or task in a second bucket.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Director Dawson-Walton?
Yeah, I mean, I'm really pleased to see this plan, and like you alluded, we sat in the legislative AMSD session focused on e-learning, and I think that from all the districts that were on a panel, it was just very positive. And, I don't know, I mean, our students may not be super excited about all this, but I am, I know as a parent too, it's a really productive way to make you out of our snow days. And I also really appreciate the thoughtfulness around accommodating families that may not have access to technology, because that's, that's very critical in our, in our district and achieving our mission. I do have a question, though, how are you notifying the families with the annual notification?
Yes, so I am in the start of framing out the communication, we'll be partnering with BARB on drafting out kind of a communication plan. The planet, the plan is to have all the communication actually ready to go prior to the August Board Meeting, so if you bless the plan with your approval, very shortly after, we will be starting to mass communicate that out, you know, putting communication out on the website, doing robo-calls, getting stuff to building leaders if they haven't sent out welcome-back newsletters, kind of as that initial go-to communication, but also letting... kind of as that initial go-to communication, but also looking at different tiers. So as we get into October, some kind of reminder communication back to families saying, hey, winter is coming. Just know we have a flex learning plan. This is the procedures and how the district will communicate that out and here's where you can get more information on how students would engage on that day. And then as we get into December, again, another tier of communication out to families as well as to staff because, I mean, we can communicate initially in the fall, here's how it's going to go and give some training early on in the fall. But as we get closer to actually enacting a potential flex learning day, making sure that that communication stays, you know, relevant and as close to the time as possible with again, access to the information.
Thank you.
Okay. Director Skadden-Jones?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. My first question is, do you have criteria already that you plan on looking at after the dry run? Specific types of criteria?
So, yes, and-
Feedback?
Yes, and we're still working to flesh some of that out. So, you know, I have, because I am a parent in the Robbinsdale School District, I saw the questions because I fill it out for my own child.
Right.
So I kind of have, you know, baseline of what some other districts have utilized, looking to what's going to parents and to students, thinking about, you know, the, the ability to access the content, the ease of how to engage with it. Time commitment is a big one. We've had a lot of conversations and that's why you see in the plan, lessons and activities, including the activity and whatever they engage with in the learning shouldn't take more than a normal class period. Because one of the, the concerns that I know have come out in some other places is, you know, when you've got six subject areas, if they all require you three hours of stuff to do, that turns into way more than a typical school day and the activities that, you know, the homework assignments that may come out of that. So trying to figure out how we put parameters around that to, to keep that manageable for students and families.
Right. The re- one of the reasons I asked is exactly that. As a teacher who has taught online before, it's hard when, when you're used to face-to-face teaching to gauge how long things will happen. So I was wondering, and I imagine that you definitely are doing this because I, I know you well enough, that you're asking the teachers and the parents and the students-
Yes.
You know, how that all, you know, plays out.
Yep. We will be gauging it and sending out surveys to, you know, the parents, teachers, and, and the students on, on how that worked.
Fantastic. And then my last question was, is there any, was there anyone from the equity team on this core planning team?
So there wasn't anybody directly on the equity team. I did engage Rev Hillstrom on, on some of the conversations around this. So he's aware of the plan. We've engaged in some of the conversations around it. Again, as we continue to implement and work on staff development for the teachers on how to develop good lessons, that's, the equity lens is a part of that conversation. I, I know Andy can share as we've been working on the online, online courses that'll be taking place at Osseo Senior High. Again, building in professional development, looking at how we build in equity, equity with, within those lessons and those environments. So we've got a lot of good things going together that, you know, play well on the flex learning plan, but are also what we're just doing with good instructional practice online with some of the online learning that we're, we're building out in Osseo Public Schools.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Anthony, I have a question regarding the types of materials that would be posted. You talked about discussions, tasks, whatever. What about live video streaming of an in, of a, of a classroom? I mean, I'm assuming teachers, a lot of the times we close the schools because it's going to be cold or the buses can't get through. But in the past, teachers have come in. So would this be bringing teachers into the classroom to do a live stream from the board and videotape that or do it from their home or wherever they want to do it from? Is that part of this plan? Is that we have the tools to do it?
Yep.
You know, should we be leveraging those?
I would say that's completely in the arsenal of how teachers could design that lesson. Again, we're leaving it a little bit open-ended because teachers know their content and they know their, their students and what's going to be best for whatever the lesson is to engage them. I know we've got several teachers already across our district that are, you know, creating video lessons and posting them within Schoology, within their regular face-to-face courses for, access for students as a resource. So that is a practice that's already happening and it's, it's going to be, you know, a tool and a strategy. We'll provide to teachers to say, here is another opportunity for how you can develop content for an online or a flex learning day activity. We do have in the plan that the buildings will be accessible to staff on those days. So again, talking about internet accessibility for staff members, if for whatever reason they don't have internet access at home, unless the superintendent says that nobody should show up to any building because of, you know, situations that could be going on, buildings will be open for staff members to come and they could go to their classroom and record a lesson from the smartboard or whatever other tools they may have at, at their disposal at that time.
Okay. Thank you. So the questions I had?
One, one more. Is there an incremental cost to the plan, like, or to any license, additional licensing? Are we working with tools we already have?
We are working with tools we already have, so there is no cost to implement this plan, other than time of people to put resources and materials together.
Great. Thanks.
Should try McIntyre, you have a question?
I just wanted to say thank you to Anthony and Andy and the core planning team. There's many districts around the metro really scrambling to get this in place and I commend the team for getting on this early in the spring and really thinking through all these, you know, complex issues. There's multiple variables involved in this and we will learn as we implement this and improve upon it. But we're one of the leaders in getting this done in time to actually be able to use it. Other than the districts that we watch present at AMSD, there's a longer list of districts that are likely not going to make that deadline. So just again, thank you for your leadership and efforts to give us this option to, to test out and get in place and continue to improve on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Hopefully we have no cancellations this year, like most of our years, but who knows? So the next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board members, are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Still moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and the motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion on these motions or on the consent agenda? I'm just going to make a comment for people following at home. These are standard items that we normally go through, minutes, personnel changes, field trips, membership renewals, resolution. The big resolution today is the 287 district long-term facilities maintenance program. We've been through that. We've had the documentation, other agreements, some contracts. Again, all standard items that we've typically been through, we're seeing all the information read it in the past and not really up for major discussion. So with that, all in favor of passing the congen- consent agenda as printed, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Now we come to our action items. And the first action item on tonight's agenda is the recommendation for approval of Osseo Area Schools' long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan. And we will receive information from Ron Meyer, our Executive Director of Finance and Operations. Director Meyer?
[inaudible] and School Board members. As stated in the board materials, administration recommends approval of the 10-year long-term facility maintenance or LTFM plan. As you recall, at the June 18th School Board meeting, we discussed the three elements that the Department of Education requires each school district to submit by July 31st of each year, including the 10-year LTFM revenue projection, the 10-year LTFM expenditure worksheet, and then the LTFM statement of assurance signed by the superintendent. As a reminder, LTFM funding is provided exclusively for deferred maintenance and health and safety-related items and may not be used for other projects. As in previous years, our LTFM projects have been reprioritized based on the greatest needs in the district, as well as considering other work that is happening in the district, in particular, the facility needs that ECMAC has been actively considering. School Board approval tonight will ensure that LTFM revenue is included in our paid 2020 preliminary levy that will come to the board in September. The next steps in our process will be to submit these items to MDE by the July 31st deadline, and then we will be back before you in December to review the current LTFM projects from the summer of 2019, as well as to present the major projects scheduled for the summer of 2020.
Is there a motion to approve the long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan?
Still moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none? All in favor of passing the motion for the LTFM 10-year plan? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. The next action item is the second reading of Policy 506, which is student discipline. Information tonight will be shared by Tim Palmetier, our General Counsel. Tim?
Thank you, Chair O'Staphie, School Board members, and Superintendent McIntyre. Minor revisions to Policy 506, student discipline, are an action item in tonight's agenda. The first reading of this policy was conducted at the regular meeting of the School Board on June 18th, 2019. At least four weeks have passed since the first reading of this policy and under School Board bylaws, if approved by the board this evening, the revisions to the policy will be adopted. Policy 506 is a, is a policy that we review on an annual basis. In this case, after review of the district's policy by the district's policy committee, no material or substantive changes were recommended for the policy. Only minor modifications are being presented for second reading tonight. First, there's a correction to a typographical error that's proposed in paragraph three of the policy. And second, there's an edit to paragraph 4B. It's proposed to clarify that disciplinary action can be taken for violations of district procedure in addition to policy and handbooks and the like. So I recommend that the board consider and adopt the minor changes to Policy 506.
All right. Thank you. Board, is there a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 506 for student discipline?
Still moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion on 506? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes and 506 is approved, five to nothing. And the final action tonight is the recommendation to graciously accept gifts to the district totaling $140,584.64. Is there a motion to accept those gifts?
Still moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? I would like to say thank you very much to, on this month, we have many of our booster clubs and PTOs and many others donating and OMGBA donating a significant amount of money from summer events and things they've done for fundraising. So thank you. It helps our children, it helps our schools, and I appreciate that. All in favor of accepting those gifts, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes five to nothing and thank you very much. At this time, we are at agenda item number 10. We will be going into closed session for negotiations. Is there a motion to recess the regular meeting for five to 10 minutes and reconvene in room N-10 for the purpose of a closed meeting of the Osseo Area School Board pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D dot oh-three to consider strategy, parameters, and developments and labor negotiations for the following bargaining groups, teachers, principals, and general counsel? Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. This meeting is recessed at 6:45 p.m. The School Board will adjourn at the conclusion of the closed session. All right. Thank you, everybody.